The Tuesday, January 22, 2019 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the swearing-in of our new council member, PG Norryan. PG, if you would come forward.
Can I ask my family to come on?
Absolutely. Come on up.
Especially my granddaughter.
You don't have to be in a line. Yeah, you can get in closer.
Come this side.
Are they in the way now?
Come this side.
Come this side. This side. There we go. Okay. He or she is.
She.
She's got her hand up, too.
Yeah, she always does that.
All right. So if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, PG Norryan.
I, PG Norryan.
Norryan. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmembers.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
The city of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
And the county of Hennepin.
And the state of Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and ability.
The best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is exciting and so really happy to have PG join us. I know that mayors probably often speak of, maybe not all the time, but hopefully all the time speak of their councils as being strong and well representative of the people and doing the people's work, and I feel really honored and privileged to lead this group of people. I think the people of Eden Prairie are tremendously fortunate to have, well, I won't necessarily speak for myself, but have my four colleagues sitting up here doing the work of the people. So, welcome PG. Just an open podium invitation announcement. We do have open podium. It's an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting. Typically, the council meetings are the first and third Tuesday of each month. Open forums are open podium from 6:30 to 6:55 PM in the council chamber here. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. It's my honor this evening to read a proclamation that will declare 2019 as a year to celebrate human rights and diversity. It asks all residents to continue their commitment and concern for equal rights for all persons, to dedicate themselves to helping those who do not yet share in that freedom, and to join the city of Eden Prairie in recognizing and celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream. I will now read the proclamation. Proclamation, City of Eden Prairie, Hennepin County, Minnesota, whereas, the city of Eden Prairie's city council and Human Rights and Diversity Commission sponsors the Human Rights Award Program, recognizing those who work to create an inclusive community spirit through their actions, activities, and programs. And, whereas the city of Eden Prairie recognizes that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream and dedicated his life to helping freedom exist for all people through his commitment to human rights and his nonviolent philosophy. And, whereas the city of Eden Prairie reaffirms its commitment to fostering diversity in our own community through the Eden Prairie Manifesto. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Eden Prairie hereby proclaims 2019 as a year to celebrate human rights and diversity and asks all residents to continue their commitment and concern for equal rights for all persons, to dedicate themselves to helping those who do not yet share in that freedom, and to join the city of Eden Prairie in recognizing and celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream. Signed, Ronald A. Case Mayor. All right. Let's see. Do I have one? Do I recognize?
Yes, Mayor, we have a member of our Human Rights and Diversity Commission here, Sharam Misagi. He's going to announce.
I saw your name there. Thank you so much for coming up.
Well, thank you very much. Honorable mayor and council members, good evening, and thank you so much for having me this special night. I'm really happy to be here. My name is Sharam Misagi, and I'm one of the members of the, our city's Human Rights and Diversity Commission. It is my pleasure and honor and very, I'm very excited to announce the beginning and the start of the process of our Human Rights Awards for 2019. I can share with you a little bit about what the Human Rights Award is. The goal of the Human Rights Award is to recognize Eden Prairie individuals, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and youth who have worked to create an inclusive community spirit through actions, activities, or programs. These are many, there are many talented groups and individuals in this community, and Human Rights and Diversity Commission is proud to be able to recognize outstanding citizens who embody the Eden Prairie Human Rights Manifesto. And the nominations are now open, and they'll be received until February 28. And the nomination actually can, anyone can find these nominations and the forms at our city's website at edenprairie.org/humandrightsawards. So there you can access the nomination or the forms, and the commissioners, the Human Rights and Diversity Commissioner, will be reviewing all the applications, and they will make the selection on the March 14 commission meeting. And of course, the human rights will be then awarded and presented at the city council meeting in May. Again, I want to say thank you very much for having us and having me here on this special night. It's a great honor, and thank you for everything you're doing, your leadership. Thank you.
Shram, yep. I was going to say, thank you also. Thank you for what you do and what the HRDC does as well. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, and then I'll ask if there are any items that you'd like to add?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Is there, are there any items to add before we second?
Second.
Okay, second. I should have asked probably before this, but Mr. Gettrill, everything's as is. You have no items to add as well?
I have, I have a couple of updates on the consent agenda when we get there, but I don't have anything to add.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. I believe Robert's Rules of Order, I should have checked on this with Mr. Russo, but allows us to put all four, approval of the minutes into one motion, providing no one has any issues or corrections. So, does anyone have of the four, we can separate them out. Do you have any items within the minutes to edit or correct? If not, entertain a motion then to approve all four.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, the consent calendar. Mr. Gettrill, you have to comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Colts. Couple of updates. First of all, in the investment policy, that's item H, we have a brief change, a small change in that policy. Within that policy, it talks about the different percentages of which the city can invest in various categories, and the one update we have is for investing in commercial paper, it should be 30% and not 40%. So that's the one update. The other thing is, is on the clerk's license, you'll see the Lions Club has three different events where they're doing temporary liquor, quite a bit of fundraising. Well, there's a fourth event that they needed to add on here, and that's on Goldenrod, and that's for, actually, the Lions Club being a part of the State of the City and School and Foundation address. That's typically actually been a morning event, but this year, we're going to do that in the evening, and the Lions Club is going to have temporary liquor license. So that, that got added to the clerk's list today.
And I have one item. I don't want to pull it. I would like just to give staff a chance just to maybe help explain to residents, but also to me. I did not vote on the first reading of this, but the item C, Eden Bluff Fourth Edition. Mr. Ellis, are you able to at least speak to what's transpired between the first reading and now tonight, the second? And my questions really had to do with some of the issues that we were alerted to by email a lot by the Hennepin Village people about traffic concerns and the median and the right turnout. If you just want to real quickly review some of that, I think that would be helpful for me.
Certainly, Mayor Case. So to respond to that question on Eden Bluffs, there were a number of comments that came in through the public hearing from the neighborhoods surrounding Eden Bluffs requesting modifications to the driveway on Laiatris Lane. And so, looking at that with the developer, we did require that when they build that Phase Two in the future, that builds the parking lot that ties into Laiatris Lane, that they would include the installation of a median that would prevent their employees from turning left out of the development onto Laiatris, which would then allow them to drive through the neighborhood. They would be forced now to take a right turn and go up to Charleston Drive. So, that is included in the development agreement that at that time, before they could get their building permit, or at the time they apply for their building permit, they would need to have that included in the project. And then there was one other item. The traffic study would need to be updated at that future date to reevaluate any changes or assumptions that may have been incorrect based on what was actually built. So they'd have to update that traffic study, and if there are recommendations for other improvements, they'd be required to make those at that time as well. And then I believe might, maybe some minor things with some installation of some deciduous trees along Laiatris Lane to prevent headlights from shining into the residential neighborhood to the west. And all of those have been addressed in the development agreement and the construction plans.
And so, traffic in the morning could enter, let's see, just trying to think, I think it's Laiatris, I'm not sure, but they could enter it on the south side, but it would be circuitous. They could not go through the neighborhoods in order to get in that way. They'd have to stay on Charleston Drive and turn, pass it, and then turn right into the parking. Is that?
Yes, but I, I think the real issue was that PM peak, when there's congestion, everyone's leaving to try to prevent having to go to Laiatris and Charleston. If people leaving the parking lot could do the left out, and they could drive through some of the neighborhood streets and go to a less congested intersection. So, it's mainly a PM peak issue, and with the installation of that median, it would prevent them from doing that.
I may be wrong, but I thought I heard an AM issue, too, with fighting traffic as they're going to work in the morning, that this would, I think, mitigate that issue as well. Maybe I'm wrong in that, but thank you. I'm glad staff did confront a lot of issues, and it feels like as we'll have options still at least to enforce as we go into Phase One and Phase Two. So we do not have a motion, so if there's a motion to approve the consent count.
We have a motion.
Oh, we, say what?
I thought we had a motion in a second to approve it, but we just, we just haven't had the vote yet.
I, I don't think I, I'm not sure.
Jan would know. I don't think so.
We don't have a motion?
No.
Okay. No, it's fine. I'm glad we want to do everything right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other items to have conversation, discussion over? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. So we do have just our one public hearing this evening. Mr. Gettrill.
Yes, Mayor Colts. One public hearing. It is a site plan review, resolution for site plan review for Xcel Energy. They're requesting to construct 165-foot monopole for the placement of a wireless communications equipment. Any tower that's over 80 feet tall in the city, the planning commission and the city council need to review that, needs to come forward in that case. In this instance, this has to do with the substation that currently exists on Technology Drive, where there actually are several towers ranging from 110 feet to 165 feet currently there. And this new monopole is something that is required for the system to communicate with each other across the network. I believe that the applicant is here to provide a presentation for you, and then the staff and the applicant can answer any questions that you would have, and then you could hold
If you would state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor Case, council members. My name is Chris Rogers, and I'm a principal land rights agent with Xcel Energy in Minneapolis. And here to talk about the field area network project we have proposed for Eden Prairie Substation. Let's see here. Probably this way is where we want to go. Maybe not. There we go. The field area network is a communication system that will enable our substation to speak with, if you will, our customers' electric meters in the area. Kind of a general overview here of how that works, but basically, this monopole will be placed within the fenced area of the Eden Prairie Substation on 160-foot pole, 160-foot pole with a five-foot antenna on the top, and that'll send out signals to smart meters and customers', meters in the area, basically. So this system is able to track things like outages, usage, and load. It's really a great reliability tool that we have for our customers in the area. Eden Prairie is one of three sites on a pilot program right now. There are two other sites that are currently in the works in the metro area, and there will be several more sites in 2019 coming that will support this field area network. So generally, it's a communication tool that will improve reliability for our customers. The site is located on Technology Drive, not far from here. The site has been in existence, I believe, since the late 80s or so, has a number of transmission lines coming in. The red line is a 345-kilovolt line. There's also the yellow line you'll see there, which is 115 kilovolt. So quite a bit of electricity coming into the substation and being provided on a distribution network from there. The site sits on about a 12-acre site right now. You can kind of see the, the site plan shows the property lines in green, the existing substation on the aerial, and then I've also indicated roughly where that proposed monopole will go. There's also related equipment called an H-frame, which is kind of the base station that goes on the ground with that. Example pictures, the example picture of a monopole with the antenna at the top to the left. This is from one of our substations in Colorado, and apologize for the orientation there, but the zoom in of the antenna on the left side there, so you can kind of see what's at the top of that pole. The lightning spike is what you see coming out of the top there.
You really don't want them facing that?
No, it probably won't work, but I have, I have my technical guy here, too, that could probably answer that. This is a schematic of the H-frame, kind of an elevation looking at it. So this is what we call the base station. It just sits on a couple of concrete piers, and this is where all the communication or the data comes from, from that monopole down on coax cables, is collected at this H-frame station and then goes into our control house for monitoring and of the data that's coming off the customers' meters. This is a great shot from Highway Five of the existing substation from Google Earth. The existing substation has quite a bit of stuff going in and out of it, as we talked about. The existing transmission tower to the left there is approximately 165 feet. That's one of the large 345-kilovolt lines that comes in. And then you'll see also kind of in the background what we call goalposts there. Those are the dead-end structures, and the spikes on top of those are reached about 110 feet. So just to kind of give you an idea of what's out there and how that will contrast with the new monopole that's there. And that's about all we had. I guess we're open for questions or comments on the field area network at Eden Prairie Substation.
Counsel, Councilmember Aho.
So a couple of questions. One is, what is the, what is the reach of the, the monopole equipment, you know, antennas that you're going to put up there in terms of geographic area around the antenna? How far are you going to reach out with that?
That's a great question. I'm going to call up Chris Thurler to answer that, because I'm the land guy, he's a technology guy. But Chris Thurler with Xcel Energy can answer that for you here.
Good evening. Generally, it'll be about, we try to engineer it to about three to five miles, but actually, we're going to stretch this one a little further, probably.
So it'll, it'll almost cover most of Eden Prairie, then?
Yes, it will. Yeah, we'll even get past the West Gate.
Is that using YMAX, then, or how?
Yep, YMAX.
And then, in terms of, you know, I mean, we always are concerned about security of these kinds of facilities and our, in our power grid and things like that, and, you know, most of it is not wireless. It's all through, through hardwired transmissions, but this really kind of is a, I see it as a change of that nature. So, in terms of security, then, I assume that you've got really high security on those, on those circuits and the systems to really prevent people from tapping into that system and being able to hack in?
Yes, sir. Generally, the RF data is encrypted 128, so 128K. So it's, it's not, you know, probably not the, necessarily the highest encryption you've ever seen, but the fact that it's combined with radio frequency that is set, takes special equipment to, to, you know, take that data in.
Right.
It makes it, the chances are very remote that it'll be cracked, so to speak. Yep.
Good. Well, that's, that's good to hear. It's exciting to see, because I think it'll really open up a lot of capability for, for our customers, for the customers in Eden Prairie, for all the residents and businesses. So, happy to see you piloting it here. And I, I looked at the map, and in terms of height and everything, I don't, it looks like the FAA has given blessings, so that's really what we're looking for, to make sure that they don't have a problem with it having the airport here.
Yep.
So, good. Thank you.
Other council questions before we open it up to the public?
I assume that this won't interfere with any surrounding businesses or residences or anything as far as their access to anything? That this is basically a neutral as far as the whole area is concerned?
As far as the, the frequency or as far as the location and the equipment itself?
Well, just, you know, coming in, this is one of your new things, and I assume that it will be neutral as far as the neighborhood goes, as far as their internet and their whatever.
Yes. Yeah, it's, we're, we're in a frequency 3.65. It's, you'd have to have a system, a YMAX-type system to, to use that would conflict with it, and that's generally not a public thing. I mean, it can be, but it's generally not.
Thank you.
We will also make sure that the spectrum is clear, and we will work to make sure, because we don't want interference on our own stuff.
No.
And there's different channels within the YMAX spectrum that you could, if there was anyone else operating, you could change to a different channel.
Yeah, we can bump up and down a little bit.
Right.
We do have engineering and tech businesses, it's not that far away from it, so it's good that you will be making sure it's on its own.
You've got a lot of other action going on in that site, as you say, so I don't have a problem with this one at all. I'm more just curious, you've got 165-foot power line pole right there. Is that just too much mixing to use that one? You have to have an independent pole 100 feet away?
Yeah, and that, that did come up with the planning staff, too. That tall pole that we showed there carries a 360, or 345-kilovolt line coming in. To put that on top of that pole would mean you'd have to take that entire line out of service, which is nearly impossible.
Got it.
Because that feeds the substation, and then you run into an issue with maintenance. If you ever needed to maintain it, you've got to take the line out, and getting an outage on that voltage of a line is.
Understood. Just curious.
Our transmission folks have said, don't put it there.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you. Just stay close in case someone else does have questions. You might want to sit just for a moment, because we'll open it up for a public hearing, but this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to address the council on this Xcel Substation Tower?
Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for site plan review on 12.61 acres.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Welcome. All right. Payment of Claims. Is there a motion to approve, and we will have a roll call vote tonight, like we should always. Is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
I would move to approve the payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiber.
Aye.
Councilmember Norayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. Thank you. All right. We move on to appointments. We do have council appointments where we, as council members, serve on various committees and boards and commissions around the region, representing us, but also therefore representing all the people of Eden Prairie. So the first appointment tonight is generic in a way, but it's the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, which basically is our HRA, which we, in this city, take on as a city council role. So is there a motion for the HRA? You can share this, you all. Anybody can.
I can't do it, because I'm in it, so.
Oh, you could, but nonetheless, out of, oh, she can't even because she can't? Oh, yeah. But others, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the move to adopt the resolution appointing the city council members to serve as commissioners for the Eden Prairie Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and appointing Ron Case as chair, Rick Gashaw as executive, executive director, and Councilmember Nelson as secretary for the calendar year 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Passes. The second appointment is the director, an alternate director to the Suburban Rate Authority. It's a group of, Mr. Ellis, I don't even know anymore, 70 cities maybe that get together in the seven-county metro area, maybe more. I find it really a powerful lobbying group on behalf of the people of Eden Prairie. I was part of it for about a decade. Mr. Ellis is the one that typically goes and represents the city, but this council appointment, they're more than welcome to get involved, and if you show up as an elected official, you will be elected chair. I almost guarantee it, because they usually don't go. They'll, they'll love you, in fact, if you need that in your life right now. So is there, we would like to appoint Mark Freiber to that, I believe, if that's your choice, so if someone would make that motion.
Move to adopt the resolution designating Public Works Director Robert Ellis as the director, and Mark Freiber as the alternate director to the Suburban Rate Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Mayor, Mayor, real quick, too. And I don't know if this has anything to do with the fact that you weren't attending as alternate, but Mr. Ellis is the chair of that this coming year.
Ah, so he got to run against him.
He did. He's now, he's now the chair of the whole group, so that's a good thing.
That is a very good thing. It's a great statement for Eden Prairie, so thank you for doing that. I'm sure you do find it meaningful and beneficial, as I did.
Thanks, Robert.
Yeah, very much. Thank you. All right. The next one is to appoint me as a delegate and council members as alternates to the NLC. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the appointment of Mayor Ron Case as delegate and council members as alternates to the National League of Cities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Great. The next appointment is to the Municipal Legislative Commission. Is there a motion?
Motion to move to approve the appointment of Mayor Case to the Municipal Legislative Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Now appointment to the Southwest Cable Commission. We have discussed earlier as open meeting, council. And also I've had meetings individually with each council member just to get a feel for what they're interested in. And we've talked about, and I believe PG's in favor, of serving along with the chair, Councilmember Brad Aho on the, am I on the wrong one?
You're on the wrong one.
Council's Cable Commission.
Oh, I jumped ahead.
E.
I jumped ahead. Well, we still, no, now we want a different person, don't we? Uh, Mark Freiberg.
Move to approve.
I'll get to you PG in a little bit.
Move to approve the appointment of Mark Freiberg to the Southwest Cable Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? I don't hear none. Is, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Great. Appointment to the I-494 Corridor Commission. Typically Brad has served on this for a long time now and you are the current chair.
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to move to approve appointment of Brad Aho to the I-494 Corridor Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Okay, this is, I have longed for this job for years. And the humor that we have used back with Gene Harris and Nancy, many people do not realize, but by statute, the mayor of each city, I believe, I'm not sure if it's a statutory Plan B city or across the state, the mayor of each city, it's just the mayors are the weed inspectors of their city. I will wear that hat proudly. So, however, the assistant weed inspector does the work thankfully. So we need to appoint Jacob, is it Busian? I'm not saying, but I'll let someone else make the motion and you all work at pronouncing. Is there someone to move the motion? Oh, come on, I tried. You go for it.
Move to appoint Jacob Busian as Assistant Weed Inspector for the City of Eden Prairie.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Passes. All right. Appointment to representatives to the Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees. I've had the honor of serve and the, and the pleasure of serving on this for a long time. It's a great group of people and we do a great service for our firefighters. We've talked to Kathy Nelson about being on this. Is there a motion to appoint her? As well as Sue Kachiver, who is our finance director for the city. Their bylaws permit an elected official and a staff person from the city.
That's correct. Really quickly, so Sue Kachiver is who you're appointing along with the council member and then according to state statute, the fire chief is also a member.
Great. Is there a motion?
Move.
We can just go up and down the line, guys.
Move to adopt the resolution appointing Kathy Nelson and Finance Manager Sue Kachiver to the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association along with the fire chief.
Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Passes. All right. Now I think I got to where I started a bit ago, correct?
Yes.
All right. So the, to the Southwest Transit Commission of which Councilmember Brad Aho is the chair. And we are adding to that commission, each city, Chan Hasden, Chaska and Eden Prairie get two representatives. And then the seventh representative is a, typically in the past been a rider representative, doesn't have to be, but it could be anyone from the three cities. And then we have a non-voting member now from Carver that sits on that board as well. So is there a motion to appoint PG Nodrian to the Southwest Transit Board?
Move to appoint PG Nodrian to the Southwest Transit Board as the Eden Prairie Appointed Representative for a two-year term to end December 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Passes. Congratulations to all the appointees. We do plan periodically, maybe even quarterly this year, to have report outs from each of us, just giving really brief updates on where, what's been happening in these various boards and commissions that we represent. We've done that in the past ad hoc as it's come up, but I think it would be nice formally just to remind people, our residents, both in the audience but also watching on TV, that we do represent you regularly beyond the hours that we're sitting here. All right. There were no reports of council members or city manager. I believe we're on to the Public Works Director. Is that correct, Mr. Geto? Do you want to start, open that up?
I'll pass it over to Mr. Ellis. Mayor Case, we have our Assistant City Engineer Carter Scholzy here tonight. He's the project manager for our Single Tree Project, so he'll give a quick rundown. It's a relatively minor project. In fact, it's an extension of the Phase 1 Single Tree that was done a few years ago with decorative street lighting, some benches and things like that, more street amenities. This is a continuation of that project down Single Tree towards Prairie Center Drive. And really the impetus of this project, if you remember, is a $500,000 escrow that we received from Walmart when they redeveloped their property to make streetscape improvements and that had a timeline of 2020 on it. So we're here, ready to execute a project that'll utilize some of those funds for those furthering of the streetscaping improvement down Single Tree Lane. And with that, Carter can go over the details of the project.
Thanks, Robert. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Again, as, as Robert mentioned, I'm Carter Scholzy. I'm the Assistant City Engineer for the City of Eden Prairie. And I will go through a couple of these slides here as they are brought up here. Essentially they'll, they'll walk through the location just to bring everyone up to speed, go a little bit of an overview. We've got a, an actual drone flyover of the existing conditions, kind of to show you what, what's out there today. Some background of where the project came from, including what Robert mentioned as the, some of the history of the project, including Phase 1 and Phase 2. And then go over some project details, the schedule, and then I'll stand for questions once we're wrapped up here. So if you don't know, Single Tree Lane is highlighted there in yellow across the, within kind of the heart of the major center area. And I'd also like to point out too that along this northern area, along Bolero and next to the water tower here, is the, the future town center station, LRT station. So it's right in the center of town and pretty important street that we're looking through there. Now, I'm going to set up this, the, the next slide's got a video. Like I said, there's a, we, we captured a drone video of this about a year ago and friend of a city staff member. And I thought it'd be useful to utilize that, so I'll run through that now and give everyone kind of a feel of what's there currently. And then it ends up in the northern, or the, sorry, the eastern section that's already finished. So bear with me as this hopefully does work.
Did you get permission from the Flying Cloud Airport Manager to do this?
Yes.
I was just going to lean over and whisper that as a joke. I didn't know you were going to do it.
Yeah, I was going to do it.
There was sound, but it didn't, it didn't go through, so. So you can see now the medians, they're turf medians. We've got some existing trees through the, the other boulevards along the edge. There's the Walmart entrance as you go up past Bolero. Again, the, the major feature of the proposed project is going to be widening that sidewalk you see to the, to the right. And then we're actually going to landscape those medians, so they won't just be grass, they will be, they'll have some trees planted through there. They'll have some plantings with low maintenance types of planting things that'll kind of pop through there with some color.
Are there plans for trees down the median? I know that's a huge issue with engineers, but I mean, are there?
There are. We've spaced them out accordingly. We kind of clumped them, we've tried to clump them together a little bit, so, because there's some sightline things going on through here. But we tried to, you know, space them out and, and put them in order there. So then we get into the Phase 1, what we're calling Phase 1. You see the, the tree grates on the side, the banner poles, the bollards, some pavers down through these medians. So these medians are too narrow to plant and do some of those plantings we want to do in the south sector, the west section, but the light poles. And it ends right through there. So a little background on this project, as, as Robert mentioned, this kind of kicked off in 2009 when we did the, the city did the major center area streetscape master plan. This was, kind of set the design framework through this, this corridor. Single Tree Lane was one of three kind of identity streets that was mentioned through this document, the other being the, the future potential north-south roadway as well as Prairie Center Drive. So it's pretty, it's a, it's a major thoroughfare through this center of town here. The precursor to the 2009 MCA plan was in 2006, we did a major center area study, as well as in 2007, there was a Town Center Design Guidelines report that was done as well. In 2010, as, as was mentioned, Walmart came in, did a redevelopment. We were able to capture an escrow, $535,000 that was set aside for streetscape improvements in the future. They've set a sunset date for 10 years since that, so we're coming up on needing to spend that, that dollar amount. And then also in 2010, we, as was mentioned, we did the eastern section of Eden Road there from Flying Cloud Drive at Bobby and Steve's over to Eden Road. So what we're calling Phase 2 is essentially this project, a Single Tree Lane Streetscape project, which goes from Eden Road right at the end of there all the way down to Prairie Center Drive. In this rendering, you can see the existing piece on the top of the slides as well as the future proposed piece, which includes the banner poles, some of the bollards, the new retaining wall around that corner with kind of opening up some of the sightlines up to that, the Jakes building that's there, as well as the planted landscape medians and light poles in that, in that view as well. Some of the key projects we've already mentioned are the, the typical Single Tree light poles there, the banner poles we've got proposed in this plan, as well as the double tree-lined sidewalk. This is kind of pointing out the southerly sidewalk along the frontage of Walmart and Jakes there, which will have two sets of trees along this, along the edge, as well as the medians, as you mentioned. Other items are going to be the benches, similar to what's up on the other end, and the similar retaining wall, seat walls that are showing up by the Prairie Center Drive area. One component of widening that sidewalk out along the south end is we'll, will require a retaining wall. We've looked at a couple of options just to maximize the use of that wall as potentially a seat wall as it runs up along the Single Tree Lane there. But due to some costs, we're probably not going to put in the wall that's, or the seat wall that's up by, that's showing up on that corner there. We're going to likely put in a modular block type wall that goes there that, that will, that will work to, to sit on as you, as you need there. I did add in a couple of project plan sheets that kind of show, highlighted the area. The, the point of highlighting some of this was really to show that we're not going to impact the road here. We're not changing road, we're not changing turn lanes, things like that. We're really just putting, this is a streetscape project, which adds, widens the sidewalk, really improves the entrance at Prairie Center Drive and Single Tree try to, try to match the other side of Eden Road, really just as you come up that entrance there, just like that rendering showed. We want to, want to make that kind of a, a special spot as we come into this corridor. As we move along, each one of these segments is kind of broken into four pieces. It's kind of each divided by those median areas with similar plantings and tree landscaping up through there. I'll point out too, this area where we have kind of the, the bench section here on the south, or the west side of the Walmart entrance. And again, a little more highlight on the crossing there of Walmart at their entrance across to where the Bolero is. And keep in mind that this access point from here to the, to the north is going to go right into that Town Center Station. So we wanted to make sure that's improved. We added kind of the, the refuge space into this median here, so pedestrians can cross safely to two lanes of traffic and then pause and then make sure they can cross safely to the next two lanes. And then as we round up to Eden, we see the banner poles in this area and the bollards again, really matching that aesthetic on the other side, as well as the tree grates that would widen this area out. Currently this is only a six-foot sidewalk here and we'll, we'll go all the way to the back of curb here, add the tree grates and some trees in that area as well, so that'll line up with the other side of the street. Quick note on the schedule, again, tonight's the council approval for the plans. February 21st, we want to open bids on this project. Within another month of that, try to award this project. And then within another month of that, whether, whether permitting, we'll start construction. With that, I can stand for questions if you have any.
Counsel.
So I guess the only, I mean, it's, you kind of touched on it a little bit, Carter, where you said that, you know, where the Town Center Station is coming in for Southwest LRT. So obviously we're, we're really taking into consideration how Southwest LRT is going to be integrated into this area and we're making sure that all of these, all of these plans integrate in well, with, well with those plans.
Yep. That's, that's the idea, especially with that Walmart access across there. It lines up right with that future access across into, right along the Bolero, right to that entrance plan for the Town Center Station.
And improve walkability in that area as well.
Yep. We're actually adding a sidewalk as part of that project just to get there.
Right. That's, that's my point. All right. Good. Thank you. That's, that's what my thought was.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes. Can we put in some low voltage electricity availability along the, where those median trees are, so that if we decide in the future, we would like to put some low voltage mini lights in those trees?
To shine up at those.
Well, not just shine up, but, you know, actual, sort of similar to what people might have outside their homes in the holidays.
Certainly could look at that. I know we have power planned to go in with those lights, with the, the Single Tree lights that go, go along the borders.
But something down that median, you know, especially it's near the light rail station. In the winter time, we might in fact want to, you know, put the little, I don't know if they call them twinkle lights, you know, they've had them downtown on the mall and they're out near the airport. They're around a lot of places.
Yeah, no.
But, so the possibility would exist that we could put those in if we so chose as the trees grew a little bit.
That's a great idea. The only thought I would have would be how fun, but also beautiful if you did the entire stretch and we're not redoing the one side by Bobby and Steve's, right? So we'd only have power at half of it.
Right. We're stopping at Eden.
Right.
But at least down the median.
Yeah, the median.
No, I agree. And those medians aren't planted.
And if you do low voltage, that takes a lot less electricity.
Well, I think you, you probably don't provide low voltage. You provide regular AC, 120 volt AC, and then you plug into that to do it.
But something so you could have energy efficient twinkle lights.
Just to plug, plug in at each median, so we.
Right.
I'm not proposing this. I'm only wishful thinking, but Janet will tell you that you need water in a median if you're really going to do what St. Louis Park did. And the reality is that that is beautiful. And in places that we're trying to show off, you know, our city and our major center area,